Good evening, everyone. I will call our work session to order of October 12th, 2021. And we do have two items, and I will pass it to City Manager Rodriguez to open up the first item, which is the Legislative Process Update.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have guests with us tonight, so thank you so much. We have our lobbyist Anne Lucheski and Angie Huss here tonight to provide some additional expertise. And then we have presenting tonight our Equity Administrator Blanca Martinez-Gavina, who started this work as Management Analyst and is transitioning and handing it over to Chris Swanson, our Management Analyst, who also will be making the presentation tonight. So I will just hand it to them.
Thank you, and I'll just make a quick note. Communications Manager asked me to remind everyone to keep a little bit of distance from the microphone, just to make sure that the recording is clear. So I did my duty. So we'll begin by just having a little bit overview of what is a legislative process. And I am sure that most of you, all of you are very familiar with that, but we want to begin to create some clarity so that the community also is aware of what it looks like. So it is a process in which an organization sets goals for what they wish to see accomplished during a legislative session. I know that's very short and sweet, but that's a primary goal. And here we have an example of the underpass that I, that is, I, what I believe is just a very, very good example of what can happen when there is partnership and a robust process. And again, the legislative goals may change based on whether it is a bonding or a non-bonding year. So what does our current legislative process look like? As we all know, we have an annual legislative breakfast. It is the yearly check-in. It is, it was surprising when I started working here in Richfield that it happened in January, because that is pretty late in the game, when most of, of the time, the legislative session starts in January. And the way that it has occurred is that we have the department directors present at a, at a meeting. It is very structured. It is very timed. So that's currently what we have, and this is an example of the legislative positions. It is a document that we put together, and we give to our representatives the day of the legislative breakfast.
All right, Mayor, oops, sorry. Mayor and Council, and this is kind of where we get to the reimagining part of this presentation. We're really starting kind of looking at what we want to move this process to be. One of those items is we've been talking with, I guess I have not been, but Equity Administrator has been talking with League Minnesota City Staff, our lobbyists, and a number of other cities around the area, kind of about what they do with this process. And one of the things we really want to do is bring City Council and city leadership kind of along with us as we start kind of reapproaching this policy. What we really want to do with this is to make the legislative process more clear to City Council, more clear to residents, and also more clear to our elected representatives. And finally, we really want to make this process more equitable and inclusive. So what we came up with was four proposed changes to our current process. This is just kind of a quick overview of what those changes are. We'll go a little bit more in-depth over the next couple pages. So that includes changes to legislative breakfast, still keeping that, but kind of moving it so it can be a more effective tool. Targeted legislative priorities. We want to vote and adopt the legislative platform. And then finally, we just want to start looking at coming up with a policy for staff when they are going to be presenting to council. We understand our staff is very knowledgeable and have a lot of good information to give at those poll discussions. We just want to make sure there's kind of a, an outline for them when they're doing that.
I have the next one. So as we mentioned, one of the first things we want to do is to move it to early fall. And that will give us some wiggle room to really begin to explore some of these platforms and also to give time for the community to engage and also engage with our elected representatives. Again, that will include a comprehensive report that will be prepared for the meeting. It will have, it will be a little bit more in-depth, and I think as we continue to have conversations with our elected representatives, we'll begin to really shape what is it that they need to advocate on our behalf. So for this, I am going to invite our lobbyists to chime in. But one of the things that we really wanted to look at is how to really hone in into this, into these priorities and make sure that we're staying within the purview of what the city can do. And also begin to foster and grow the relationships with our elected representatives. So this is not only a one, once a year conversation, that it really extends beyond that so that we can have their ear as they're making these decisions even during the session and after the session. So just how is it that we can continue to develop those relationships? And now I'll bring in our lobbyists to chime in as to why we believe that this is, this is an important proposal.
Sure, thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor and Manager and Council. It's really nice to be with you tonight. You know, for those of you I haven't met, just a little, you know, I'm one of your, and Angie's another, one of your lobbyists, where there's a team of us at the Capitol working on your priorities. But just a little about me, I served on a city council in the suburbs of the Twin Cities, and I served in the legislature. So I kind of, you know, I kind of see both perspectives here, I think. So just a little thought, you know, we, we work with a lot of local units of government at the Capitol in trying to get them success at the Capitol. And I, and I do think one thing to observe, I think the fall comment is really great because January is so late and drafting bills is already, you're kind of, you have great legislators, and all of them will do, you know, what you guys need, but that's really tight. But to this slide in particular, I think one of the things that we notice is city councils that are sort of working in the state area or the federal area when they're really a city. And it, it gets a little confusing, I think, for the legislature when cities are taking positions on federal laws or state laws that really don't impact cities. So I think if, if you can try to limit that scope and things that matter to Richfield, I mean, certainly there are positions that you take as overall beliefs, the mission of your city, and you're standing behind those, but you're not really working, I think, cities, individual cities aren't working effectively for a certain state policy. When one city says, you know, "We're going to take on the Boundary Waters canoe area," you know, I think the legislature doesn't really hear that kind of a message. The city of Richfield taking on things Richfield needs for Richfield, I think makes sense to your legislature, excepting hearing positions that might be like, "We're for affordable housing." That, that kind of stuff is good, but when cities often get into supporting a specific bill, like House Val Act, that really doesn't have anything to do with the city of Richfield per se, I think just limits the ability of Representative Howard and Greenman and, you know, Senator Wicklund and Senator Torres-Rae maybe to really bring your agenda forward. So we find it helpful, particularly when people get into federal issues. I think that sort of gets lost at the Minnesota State Capitol. So it's just our thought on the scope part of there. I think the, the platform, and obviously you're the elected officials, you're going to decide. I've seen cities have, you know, 20 pages of legislative issues. I think that's probably a pretty bad idea. No one's really going to read it, and they're taking positions on, you know, dozens and dozens and dozens of issues, you know, of the kind of one or two pager, high level. These are the things we're trying to achieve, tend to be more impactful and get read. And then it allows the mayor and any of you who may be testifying or who's ever filling in for the mayor that day, or the managers testifying, that it's very clear that you have this agenda that you've, you know, taken a position on together. You voted on, while you individually might not like pieces, your council's got a formal position. So we see a lot of cities go through that process, and I think, you know, watching the manager and, and Blanca and others trying to think through, you know, how you can elevate this, I think it will, will help you with your influence at the Capitol.
And I can just add quick, I think from a structure perspective, it's really helpful to kind of lay out where the initiatives where Richfield is leading on, and then separately, the issues where Richfield is supportive or opposes. So that way, there's some delineation, and it's, it creates some clarity for your legislators on kind of what things they maybe want to prioritize as pushing for the city, and then things to just kind of put on their radar as well.
Thank, um, thank you for that.
One moment, sorry. You have a question, Councilmember Wayland?
Well, I guess our questions helpful now? Should we wait till after the presentation? Um, I just wanted to, I think I understand what you're saying, especially with that last comment, but wanted to clarify with a more concrete example. Like I know our police chief has spoken at the Capitol in favor of driver's licenses for immigrants, and like, that's something that we can't impact at a city level, but obviously like impacts our residents, but also is not, like, that's not our thing that we're leaning on. I guess how I, I would like to still be able to have a voice in those kinds of issues that impact our residents, and would appreciate your, uh, some, some more clarity in your expertise on how that is best done or when that's most helpful.
Yeah, Councilmember Wayland, I think that's a great, you know, it's sort of cutting the baby in half, right? Because you, you want to take these positions that you know Richfield's demographics in particular are impacted by. So, you know, maybe that's appropriate then, where kind of like Angie was saying, that's a mission or an overall philosophy versus we're, we're trying to pass this bill. You know, I think you, you all as a council have, that's where I think the power comes in voting for a legislative agenda, because you may have, some of you don't agree with what, that, right? But ultimately, Richfield's taking a position, just like any other vote you guys take. You might approve a development, one of you might vote no, that development goes forward. So I think you have the power to, to decide that with the manager and your, you know, your cabinet, your, the folks who are running the departments. The issue of who's testifying, I think gets a little more difficult, and I think you can think about that. I think the manager is going to talk about that more, but, you know, it's delineating. If, if Councilmember Supple comes to the legislature and testifies on something, and she's there, "I'm Councilmember Supple from Richfield, and our city is for this, and this is what we're doing and why." That's one thing, if, but if she's saying, you know, "I'm a council member in Richfield, I'm Mary Supple, and I'm here as a citizen, not speaking for the city of Richfield." You know, having police chiefs make those delineations are really helpful too, because the legislature can get confused about, "Is Councilmember Wayland saying that? Or is that police chief saying that?" So I think that's the kind of thing you as a group have to decide. What is a policy big enough, that might be state or federal, but that impacts your residents? Those become acceptable and make sense. Like you can imagine the city of Rochester taking positions on, you know, how healthcare is delivered, because they're really a Mayo Clinic city, and I think people get that. But I, I don't know that every city, you know, it would make sense to be taking positions on things like how healthcare is delivered.
City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just, I'll just build on this, and we've talked about this. I think in that particular example, I think the chief is a subject matter expert, and so can provide good context, and so can advocate for it, because it was in our platform as well. But I do think that our, taking just a few issues, which we have gotten from council, and putting them in and saying, "Those are some of the issues we support." We're not leading on it. It may not be specific to our everyday operations. Immigration reform, sorry, immigration reform is one of them. And then affordable housing would be another, although we will, would have specifics probably with affordable housing. So I think those are a couple examples. So I have talked to both Anne and Angie about that approach, just pulling a few subjects, and, and again, expressing our support for that. So I don't know, I didn't mean to steal your.
No, no, I think it's, so I think we, I think vote and adopt legislative platform is pretty well covered. I think just kind of the final, you know, one of the things we also are recognizing is, in staff is, we have some very educated, knowledgeable people on a lot of these, these big issues that are policy issues. So what we're going to start working on is kind of a, a, a policy for internal city staff on kind of when these operations arise, you know, what, what, are they representing the city in that? Or are they representing, you know, the professional unions? How to make that a little bit more clear when people are going up in front of those bodies to, you know, make statements to those points. Finally, this is just kind of a quick summary. So next steps, start really jumping into legislative breakfast. Start working with staff and directors, create a list of targeted legislative priorities. And then have that, have the city council adopt those priorities at a later meeting. Then ultimately, sort of continue to work with the HR manager and the city attorney to come up with a legislative testifying policy internally. Open up the questions, also if the lobbyists have any additional points to add there, but just kind of open.
All right, Councilmember Supple, and then Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Well, it's not really a question, but I, I would like to say I'm very supportive of the council actually adopting and voting on the legislative priorities, so they're in the public record. I think that is something that we should have been doing in the past, and I'm glad that we're doing it now, or going to do it now.
Yeah, I, I agree with that point. I think this is generally on the right track. And last year being my first year and coming in late to the process, it was unclear. And I guess it's, it wasn't just me, it sounds like the whole process is getting cleaned up now. I did have a question. Two slides ago, you had something about the like internal, what is that? The internal political policy is sound inconsistent with past practices?
Can you speak better? Sure. So the city has an internal political policy currently in place, mostly that covers if a city employee wants to say, you know, run for city council, advocate for a political position, those kind of actions. As of right now, it's pretty silent on any sort of like testifying to governor bodies, anything like that. So I think what we're really trying to do is kind of separate this and kind of come up with a very, you know, clear and concise policy for those instances.
Okay. Um, and, sorry, could we see that policy, or was it in a packet if I missed it? Okay, I'm just curious what direction people have currently. So, um, the other question I had, so you mentioned obviously it being adopted by council. Is there a work session at which we are discussing like the subject matter of those priorities? Or are you just bringing it for final adoption? And then when would we expect to be doing that? Because I do have, you know, concerns about some of the things that were in last year's.
Yes, we will, there will be a work session discussing those policies.
Okay. And then finally, is it unusual how it's like, you mentioned that you'd be limiting to fewer priorities per department, but it seemed odd in the past how, I mean, I guess we did give our like top Richfield priorities, but it felt like a little bit of a laundry list, where it was like, each person put this, and then we put it all in one document. And police weren't even, they were like attached as a separate document. So like, I don't know, it just didn't feel cohesive. Basically, will that change, or will it just be limited on the number?
So a couple things. First of all, the, this policy is like an HR policy, and we're looking to clean that up. So we want to do two things, and we're working with Attorney Techen on some language that staff would use when they are testifying, or even if they're sending letters or emails, if they're doing it outside of the platform and outside of their, their role. In other words, they've asked me, and they're going to testify in support of the platform. But then we also hope to add it to the standards of engagement, so that council members are also following a similar policy. So we're working on that talk, so that's, that was your earlier question. And then we're planning to bring it back to you, the legislative priorities, the actual platform, at the November 9th work session. We're going to send it out to directors, ask them to prioritize their top three to five. There's nothing magical about that number. If there's, for example, if there's a lot of affordable housing issues, and it's going to be, you know, seven to eight, I, I don't know, but I don't want, to Anne's point, we don't want a 20-page document. There is going to be some more general language in there as well, because we're going, we will have to play defense on issues that we don't know about. For example, like, anything with diminishing local control would be probably one of them. Concern about LGA could be something else. We are not going to have any kind of attachments. Like, yes, last year, we had the Minnesota Chief of Police Association, I think is the correct name. We attach that. We're not going to do that in the future. It will just be our legislative platform. And then, of course, our staff, if they're part of professional associations, will be sending those platforms as part of their work with those, with those associations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Supple?
So as far as timelines, are we looking at around Thanksgiving that we would have the legislative breakfast? Or, because I was thinking if we're having a work session and we have to adopt it?
Yeah, good question. We're trying to build the plane as we fly it this year, so we're later than we hope to be in future years. I forget the target date for the, I think it's the beginning of December, we're hoping to have the legislative breakfast. And we're hoping to get that date scheduled pretty darn quickly, because, you know, getting the legislators scheduled is, is tough as well.
Councilmember Wayland?
I would just echo the comments from Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, and say I think moving toward, it sounds like we're headed this direction, but moving toward a more cohesive whole makes sense. I almost wonder, I mean, this, this would be gibberish to the legislators, but at least for internally, when we're talking about it, like being clear of which of our core goals the legislative priorities are connected to. I know we do that with our objectives and action steps, and that's, that's always helpful, just in grounding. And then just really want to commend that I, I think we're headed in the right direction, specifically on this testifying policy, that I know, I, I found out last year after the fact that a staff member had testified on something that I personally didn't agree with and wasn't in our legislative platform, and had done so, I mean, it's all virtual, but through their city computer, wearing a city, like clothing. And so I think this is absolutely right. I mean, it, it very well could have been that if we had voted on it, I would have been voted down, and we would have ended up in the situation you're describing, where the city takes a position as a whole that I might not agree with. But I think making it clear what the process is, what we have approved or not, is really just essential. So I'm excited about this. I think we're moving in the right direction.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And as far as I know, when staff in the past have been testifying as part of their professional associations, they have made that clear. But we hope to develop language that we just all will use, and it's just really clear.
I had a couple comments. Um, could you go to the slide, please, that says the, all the recommendations? Let's see, there was like, there we go. Excellent, thank you. So I'm super excited. I think this, we have already come pretty far from what I remember in terms of our legislative breakfasts, and just, I, I feel like we're moving in a direction where we can work better together on this and, and work with our staff and the council and our legislators on the right time. And I think our staff has been really effective in, in recent years, also, you know, lobbying and with our lobbyists and partnership with our lobbyists, and getting some really great wins. So I think those are all signals that we're moving in the right direction. So I think you mentioned this, City Manager Rodriguez, but it would be great to have something like the mirror of a guide for council members too. And kind of thinking through, I know last, the last couple sessions, I've been, you know, the main person on the council. But I also think, you know, it'd be great for other council members, if they're interested in testifying as well. What would that look like? And then also, if myself or anyone else on the council, you know, is testifying, how can we give the rest of the council an update on all those things? Or just making sure we're all aware and tracking. And then, let's see here. In terms of the creation, there was a timeline that had the, where staff would go and look at the, write up their priorities, and then the council would vote on it. It sounds like you said there is a work session where that's discussed. But again, if there's a way to have that be more of a partnership, or we're working on it together, so maybe it's like staff bring their priorities, and council, you know, talk to community and think about other priorities that then we can also bring and see if those are included, discuss them, if it makes sense. And because we hear, you know, we have priorities also, and the community talks to us about priorities as well. And then I'm, this is more of a question, and I feel like the plan moving forward makes a lot of sense. And then just looking to the future, I think, you know, what would it look like to get ideas from our community? Because we do get ideas from our residents on legislative priorities. We do have asks to say, "Hey, you know, would you support this? Would you support that? Take a position on that?" So, you know, those asks do come to us. So I guess the short-term kind of question is, how do we respond to residents? And how do they fit, those requests fit in this process? And then for the future, what would it look like? You know, is it through the, through the boards and commissions where community, you know, they host opportunities for community to talk to the Transportation Commission about ideas or, or something like that? That's kind of in the future, but just some thoughts that I had around that. And then, um, this is a, a separate maybe, but related issue, and I think it's handled differently in different cities. And I know we've had some discussion on this, but kind of what is the line? And is there a process, or are there any guides around council members and the mayor signing on to letters of support around advocacy for different issues? And I know that there's like a spectrum of all, you know, types of issues depending. And so what does that look like? And I, I think some council members sign on formally onto letters, and they vote on that. I know that councils, other councils, sign on to letters as individual, you know, policymakers. So that was just like a, a separate issue, but I know it's related to this issue around policy and advocacy and getting a little more clarity. And I think that's everything. I, I mean, in addition to making sure the full council knows, and we're all, you know, up to date, up to speed on kind of who's testifying for what and, and how it went, you know, I'm sure the community would love to know that as well. So just thinking more about communication on that. But I'm very excited. It's in the right direction. We've been going in the right direction, and I think these improvements will help greatly.
Councilmember Wayland?
Just a quick comment that's less about this. Less about this specifically, but more just, we don't often get to interact with you, other than just via email. Just wanted to say that I, I really appreciate the email updates, and I think, I think we have done a better job recently of naming our like top priorities. But just to say that I, I especially appreciate that as we identify those, then, thank you. That then whether it's the underpass bonding or the, the TIF changes, that then you can give specific updates on the things that you know are at the top of our list, and that that just makes that all more cohesive. So thank you for that. I think that's already happening.
Other comments or questions?
Well, I said this already, but I'll just say it again. I just want to give a huge thanks to our lobbyists. I think they do an exceptional job. I've had the pleasure of testifying in partnership with them many times, and they always, you know, have great check-ins with our staff, with myself, and, and do such a great job of strategizing around roles, responsibilities, talking points, preparing and making sure that we have, we're the most effective as possible with the limited amount of time that we have. And I think it has really helped us greatly. And in the way that Richfield is growing, you know, I, I think that growing that, those muscles around our legislative advocacy is super important. So thank you so much. It's great to work with you all.
Maybe I can just say, on behalf of us and our whole team that isn't here, you know, thank you. It's been an honor to work with you all, and you, you know, your direction through the manager is extremely helpful to us. If you would like to receive more information or less, we're, we never quite know. If we email people too often or not enough, just please let the manager know. And she just does such a great job of communicating your wishes to us. You know, one thing that I think is obvious to me is Richfield's political with a small p, not d or r. Political prowess is growing at the Capitol, and I think the organizations that you belong to, like the League of Minnesota Cities, the Association of Metropolitan Municipalities, you know, those organizations that Katie's really involved in and a part of, and a subject matter expertise to, expert to those things, you know, we're really seeing you guys, you know, rise in that area. And I think, you know, to Angie's point of sometimes just having positions as opposed to the detailed agenda, that can really help your manager when she's asked like that, "Can you sign on to this League of Minnesota Cities letter that we're going to fight this local control issue?" Or, you know, some of those broad vision pieces really help signature quickly for Katie and the ma, and the mayor, that if you don't have those in position, then often the mayor feels like she can't sign that letter, because she doesn't really know where you guys are at. And so we find all that, you know, very helpful, and it's just been such an honor to work with you. We feel great about how the underpass went, and the TIF district and your staff is so good. They really helped us problem solve. She was like, "We need to fix this housing tip, or we're not going to get it." And they really did an amazing job. And now Wood Lake, and we're all excited for the house tour that's coming. So thank you so much for letting us work with you.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions in this item? Councilmember Supple?
I'm, I was really happy to hear you say that.
I'm, I was really happy to hear you say that we could maybe clarify taking positions on, if we're asked to sign on to a letter, because I know that has been an issue because you don't want to have open meeting law violations and that kind of stuff. So it would be helpful to have some guidelines.
For sure. Other questions? City Manager Rodriguez.
I just want to thank Councilmember Whelan for pointing out that we have those top three priorities. And I think that has been helpful because I think we can do a few things really well, and it does take time to do it well. And if you get too, if you have too many priorities, we're not going to get things accomplished at the Capitol. So thank you for pointing that out.
And I'll just add, I do want to also thank our staff, who just do an exceptional job in this process as well. Again, you know, being there for testimony, responding to very in-the-weeds questions that we might be asked, getting the, you know, the points, talking together, testifying, giving real-life examples and experiences of the impact that it has on our city. So our staff also does an exceptional job in leading in this area. And it takes a lot of work to prepare for a visit or a testimony, and our staff does a great job in that. So I want to acknowledge them as well.
Other comments or questions? Great, thank you. And before we move to the next item, I just want to check in with Councilmember Simon Troutman. How are you doing? Are you okay?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't know if you, you let folks know, but yeah, I was, there was, there was a new puppy in the car behind me that was just adopted. And the, the new dog mom was trying to calm the puppy, and then, and then, I'm thirty-five. So, but I'm, I'm okay, puppy's okay. Yeah, and so it's, it's nice to meet you in person. And I'm not, I'm sure I'm just agreeing with what everybody else said when I was, I was gone. But we're really grateful for what you do and for what our city manager and our staff, and Director Stark's here, and Director Asher is not here, but both of them have been really instrumental in advocating for our city and in alignment with our mayor in having been here for, for five years, which is not a long time, but relatively a long time relative to the, to the change in the council. There's just a sharpness and a focus that sees us as a regional leader. And we think, we're thinking of ourselves that way, and that's wonderful. And I just think that I'm really honored to serve with everybody with that kind of mindset. So thank you so much.
We're glad to know you're okay, Councilmember Troutman. Okay, it looks like we can go to the next item. All right, thank you so much.
And before I transition, I just wanted to give a shout out to Housing Manager Julie Urban, who did a great job with the TIF legislation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think we thanked everybody else, but. So I'm really excited to introduce our state demographer, Susan Brower. I have heard her speak before, and you are in for a treat. And so we are gonna load up her presentation, and come on up. Yes, of course. So as we go into strategic planning, we are trying to start big picture. And what better than with an update on our demographics for the city and the region? And so I'm really excited for your presentation tonight.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi.
I'll start by saying, I was thinking about, I'm really excited to be here and to tell you what we learned out of the 2020 census so far. I'm, I'm a Minneapolis resident, but I have lived in, on the border of Minneapolis and Richfield my whole life. So I feel like if we were to map where I spend most of my dollars, right here. And if you have, if you have a demographic question for me, you can just hop over to Target most nights, and there I am. Okay, so I'm gonna start by kind of sharing the big picture of how the state is growing, where it's growing, and then focusing on, on Richfield and what the growth there has looked like. Please feel free to stop me as we go too. That's, that's just fine. So Minneapolis grew by just over seven percent over the last decade. We added about four hundred thousand people, so it's five point seven million is our state's population at this time. You may have heard in the news that we kept on, kept our eight congressional districts by twenty-six people counted. Twenty-six people counted. It was quite, quite a feat, and I know that Richfield was very involved in outreach efforts on the ground, and I appreciate, appreciate that. I thank you for that. I know that your efforts here certainly got twenty-six more people counted and kept that, kept that seat. So, thank you to those of you who, who worked on that here in Richfield. I know that there was a lot of good work going on. If we look at kind of how Minnesota grew relative to other places around the US, we can see that it does okay for a Midwestern state. The other states in lighter blue or Illinois, kind of even in that yellow color, grew less or even lost population. Illinois lost about twenty thousand people, so it's not a given that states will continue to grow, especially as we age. North Dakota and South Dakota outpaced us a bit, but they're very small states, so it's easier to reach those higher percentages. In general, the story here is that Minnesota has a really strong population growth for where we live in the country. Much higher growth is happening in the southern part of the US right now and the western part. This is something that's happened for a number of decades. We may see changes in the future in some of these patterns as climate change continues to progress and water resources that are scarce now continue to stay scarce. So where we are now is just, just fine. We're doing just fine in terms of, in terms of our growth, but nowhere near the level of growth that we see elsewhere around the US. If we look at which population groups grow, now this is statewide, and we'll dig into Richfield in a moment. We saw that those four hundred, of those four hundred two thousand people added to the state's population over the last decade, we lost about fifty-one thousand white, non-Hispanic residents compared to 2010. And all other BIPOC groups grew over the decade. Now, when I say we lost, oftentimes people immediately start thinking about migration, who is moving where, who is coming, who is moving away. Most of our population growth that happens at this level is happening just because people are being born or they're passing away. And so this is really just reflecting the age structure, an older white, non-Hispanic age structure compared to other populations of color that we see growing. We see this pattern at, at the state level, but we've seen it at many, many different levels, at many county levels, at many city levels as well, where we're starting to see this decline in the white, non-Hispanic population, even though it's still the majority population. It's, it's beginning to decline in many different geographies around the state. If we look at where the growth happened, we can see in terms of percentages, the blue areas on this map are showing population growth. And so the very darkest blues are showing where the percentage was the highest. So we see some of the Twin Cities counties in that darkest color, blue. Harvard and Scott Counties kind of stand out. Olmsted stands out, and then up, Clay County up by Fargo-Moorhead. Most of the growth that happened this decade was really concentrated in metro areas, particularly the Twin Cities metropolitan area, but also Rochester, Clay County, Mankato. So it was really the metro areas that propelled the growth this decade. The orange areas of the map are showing you areas that declined in population, and many of these tend not to have a metro area within them. They're, they're largely rural counties that have continued to decline this decade as they have in earlier decades as well. And just to kind of bring it home, in terms of how the growth compares around the state, Hennepin County far outpaced to the growth of any county in numeric terms, adding a hundred and twenty-nine thousand people of those four hundred two thousand that we added. So a quarter of the growth happening in Hennepin County. And you can see about three, just over three hundred thousand people who were added this decade, were added in the Twin Cities metro. Seventy-eight percent of the state's growth overall. So very concentrated growth in the Twin Cities metro. That doesn't mean that the growth wasn't happening elsewhere, but it really, if you look at which bubbles are, are large enough to make, make a label on this, on this graphic, you can see that most of them are Twin Cities metro or adjacent. The very small red dots are those counties that lost population. And so for the most part, we're talking about relatively small losses and, and punctuated by this massive amount of growth in, in the Twin Cities area. Looking at the fastest-growing cities, and then I promise I will get to all the details about Richfield. Here are our fastest-growing cities. I guess what's unique about the list this time around is that Minneapolis and St. Paul topped the list. In past decades, they would have actually lost, they, they lost population, so they wouldn't have made this list. But to have seen that turnaround in growth in, in that decade is pretty unique historically, other than when the, when the state was first forming, and that's where all the growth was happening. So we're talking about a lot of growth right in the center of the urban areas. And then we're still seeing quite a bit of growth in the farther-reaching suburbs, and we'll look at a, a map of that in a moment. So in addition to Minneapolis and St. Paul, we see some of those metro areas, metro-area cities on the list, Rochester, Mankato, Moorhead, as I mentioned, and then a lot of the suburban areas that, that will be familiar to you from being in the Twin Cities. Okay, now Richfield. So this decade, Richfield added about one thousand seven hundred, just over one thousand seven hundred residents. So up from thirty-five thousand now, that, that total population is just barely shy of thirty-seven thousand. And you can see if we look back way toward, you know, way back in time when, when the city was just taking shape, that there has been a dip in population in the more recent period, in the eighties and the nineties. And we've seen that growth kind of turn around in 2010. That continued in 2020, and in fact, that growth was even larger this decade than last decade. And so we see this kind of upward trajectory, starting, beginning with the 2010 census and then continuing now into this decade as well. Right now, Richfield's 2020 population just surpassed its 1990 population. So that gives you kind of some sense of where it is in regaining those numbers lost from the seventies. And if we look at the percentage changes, we can see that, that those gains increased this time around. So Richfield added five percent. That seventeen hundred represents about five percent of the state's population. That's doubling the percentage of, of the number gained last decade. And here again, we have, and I'm gonna need a cheat sheet for this, so I know my rates, but we have a, a map of the percentage growth of kind of all the metro cities mapped out here. So you can have a sense of where that growth was happening. And, you know, if we look at the very darkest areas of the map, I think I have a pointer. I do, okay. So we have kind of out toward the edges, we have cities that have a tremendous amount of growth. This is, for example, at Seago at forty-seven percent. Shakopee down here at eighteen percent, Woodbury at twenty percent. So really a lot of growth for those areas that have land to continue to expand into. We saw that continuing this decade, but again, Minneapolis's percentage was twelve percent, St. Paul's nine percent, which is quite a bit of a turnaround. Now, what we have seen, what many metropolitan areas across the US have seen this decade has been that the growth has slowed a bit in their urban core. And the cities that are just around that urban core, the sometimes called first-string suburbs, have seen some of that growth pick up as some of the, the population that moved there initially kind of moved into more homeownership. And so we've seen that a little bit here in the Twin Cities, but not to the extent that some other regions have so far, anyway. Comparing with your, Richfield's immediate neighbors, Edina, the percentage was almost twelve percent. Eleven point six percent was the growth. Bloomington, eight point six. Eagan, seven point three. So kind of all in the ballgame, but Richfield was, was, as I said, just five percent, which is close to what Imber Grove Heights was as well. So you're kind of pure city in, in that regard in terms of growth this decade. Now, where the growth happened, we've got kind of a C shape that shows you where the growth was a little bit greater than other areas. And kind of looking at it, to me, it corresponds to kind of just the land use patterns there already. So a lot of your, a lot of your larger parks are in those areas that were, you know, you're not, you're not gonna add housing within those park areas, so you don't see as much growth in those areas. And then along your, your highways and, and some of the new kind of development, we did start to see some of that growth happening. And I'd say, you know, if we look census tract by census tract, which is each of these little, there's, this is cut into, oh, about eleven pieces. That tells us what the growth rate is, and it was these two census tracts here and these down here that showed the most growth across the region. So we've got, this, this one grew ten and a half percent. This was seven point eight percent, six percent, and seven point three. So just outpacing that average, although it was fairly steady growth. Now, I had to look twice. Would you expect this growth up here? So I had to look twice and do a little investigating, and I think that may be something that you want to continue to do. But just looking at, for example, the, the Chamberlain Building, kind of going up there. The census was taken and was referenced to April first, 2020. And I know that 2019 kind of summer toward the end of the year is when, if I'm not mistaken, that building began being populated. And so it's possible that what happened was there just wasn't enough residents there to kind of make up or, or to see the level of growth that you might expect to see if you took the census right now. But it's also possible that there was some other things going on with the data that didn't capture. Yeah, that's what we're saying. That also didn't capture the number of people there. So we, I'll talk about that in a moment. But what we saw in this census tract here, even, even with the new housing, was a growth rate of about two and a half percent. In terms of total populations, these bubbles represent the size of the population in each group. And I'm sorry, I didn't have a nicer way to label it, but there we have the population numbers for each of those census tracts within those groups. And the growth numbers in each of those tracts as well. So how much the population changed between 2010 and 2020? That far northwest corner registering eighty-eight additional people over the amount of, of people in 2010. So again, if we look at these kind of census tracts that I was pointing out on the northern and western border, and again, the south and western border, that, that's where we see the, the change the largest in numeric growth and then also in percentage growth, too. We see that a little bit more. Can I stop and ask a question of you all? Okay, so does this look like what you would expect, knowing what has happened here in the last decade? Or does it not look like what you would expect? And that's an honest question because I want feedback on what the data look like to people who know this area very well.
Any comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Heyford O'Leary?
Yeah, as, as been noted, I'm realizing the timing with the ESED stuff is weird, and I'm hopeful that future ACF stuff starts to reflect that, to give us some sense. But otherwise, yeah, it's pretty much what I'd expect. I would say it is, it is particularly striking to compare how much growth, although still not a huge absolute population. how much growth, although still not a huge absolute population, that was just west of the border in the Southdale area, where it's like deep red and then going into much more moderate growth in Richfield, so that's it's striking anyway, yeah.
Yeah, I thought so too. So that was just around the Southdale area, yeah, and the numbers there were, I'm sorry, one thousand twenty was the number that was added there over that, over that decade, yeah.
Councilmember Troutman, did you have something you wanna share?
Thank you, Mayor, and I thought, I I just wanted to to comment anecdotally and was curious your thoughts, and you maybe alluded to this a little bit. But in the northwestern quadrant, or quadrant is not the right word, but
Census tract.
Census tract, thank you. That there, that was such a large area of of growth. There has, there is development that's happened there now, but it wouldn't have been captured during the the census. So I was curious if that was better census data capturing or just increased density within the current housing stock. But I just, I I was surprised by that, because physically, I don't think too much had changed when the census took place.
Yeah, good question. So so far, we don't have data to be able to tell whether household sizes increased. But we have heard from other cities, I'm thinking of Edina in particular, that they know that for the places where they're they haven't really added much more housing, that they're seeing population increases in those areas just as a result of older families moving out and younger families moving in, which tend to be larger. So that sure could contribute to it. The other piece that I want you to be aware of, and those of you working with the data to be aware of, is that the Census Bureau is using a new method to to protect individual respondents confidentiality, and they're fuzzying the data in a way that they haven't in the past. And so these data are not as accurate as what we think of typically a census data. So if you see something that appears wrong, that's also a possibility that the data have been altered a bit to mask, to to protect individual confidentiality. It's not great. We've been talking with the Census Bureau, pleading with the Census Bureau for years not to to do this or to do this in a very careful way, because so many people depend on on accurate data at least every ten years.
Yeah, I just, if I could follow, I, that's, I mean, I'm big picture, super supportive of protecting people's data. At granularly, at granularly at our level, it seems really critical that we, if it's, if it's altered, that we know it's altered and wouldn't make decisions on
Agreed.
So I, I just found that was, that's remarkable. Could it impact our decision-making at this level with that intentional obscurity of the the data?
I guess it depends how you use the data, and so knowing that this is the first data that we're seeing, it's called, it's called differential privacy. Just if you wanna look it up and and read a little bit more about it. But it sure could, depending on how you you are using the data. And so you should know that going forward, what we're expecting and what we're seeing in the twenty-twenty data is we don't have the same level of precision that we've had in the past. So be aware of that, and we're continuing. There there are more data releases to come next year, and we're kind of pushing back as hard as we can. Again, I completely support confidentiality and privacy, we need that. But I know that a lot of people need the data to be very accurate when you're looking at decisions like like you all make.
I was gonna add a comment in response to your question to the council. I would say there's another thing that I was observing and a part of that I haven't heard, you know, be taken into account necessarily. But I know that Richfield did a a great job of reaching hard-to-count communities, BIPOC communities, folks with disabilities, the the historically hard-to-count communities, and and I think that some of the changes are also influenced by just getting more community members out there, reaching out in languages and with trusted sources. So I know that that was a really important thing that we did here in Richfield, and I think Equity Administrator and former analyst Martinez Gavina for helping lead that. But I'll, and also a lot of community groups, resident groups in Richfield that did that outreach. And then I wanna also add in that vein that there was a lot of intimidation that was successful in keeping away people from from filling out the census. Whether the citizenship question happened or not, it didn't matter, because the the end goal was achieved. People were afraid, confused, and there were still people that were affected that did not fill out their census because of that. So those are two other factors that I know particularly affected Richfield, but also nationwide.
Great, yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
And Councilmember Whelan, and then I think we had some staff comments, too, if you wanna join us as well for a comment? Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I was just gonna say, I think the only thing that surprised me was the southwest corner. Just knowing that this last decade was the huge shift from crossroads to concierge that had been a lot of, I mean, setting aside the question of whether families, larger families should be in one-bedroom apartments, just that the reality is that they were, and then they were displaced. And that I know at least the school district had, I think it was a hundred and twenty-six students that were displaced out of the district. And so I guess I'm surprised to still see that as one of the largest growth areas. I mean, I know there's a lot of other apartment buildings in that area, as well as single-family homes. So that could be any number of things, but I was surprised by that.
Councilmember Supple?
From what you're saying, if I'm understanding correctly, like the central area that had forty-two, that that might be that it's a lot of residents that their kids have already moved on and this, and and they've been there a long time versus like the the two-hundred-three would have a lot of young families. That seems to go with what I've seen. I think, I think that would make sense.
City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just think Community Development Director John Stark may have something to add.
Yeah, I'm John Stark, the Community Development Director, and by education, a geographer. So we don't really, at the staff level, we don't really have a great way of counting people, other than the census. And we don't really have a great way of counting occupancy, you know, persons per household. But we keep meticulous records on housing gains and losses. You know, anytime a a housing unit is lost, for whatever reason, we catalog it anytime that there's a gain. And so I was surprised, based on our housing gains and losses, that our population didn't grow more than than the census indicates. I suspect that what Councilmember, that Mayor Reagan Gonzalez and Councilmember Whelan have been talking about is the case that that certain populations are still being undercounted. And they're populations that Richfield has in in greater proportions than some of our neighboring communities. Especially that that southwesternmost quadrant that was mentioned. My cynical nature says that when the, what had been Crossroads at Penn, which may have had X number of of people that were, for lack of a better word, marginalized. And they're replaced by a lesser number of more affluent people, more likely to have residency, all those kinds of things. That in reality, I I have to believe that the, and and knowing development patterns, that that's, that southwest quadrant is just inaccurate from reality. But I think that's the nature of the census, and they they make improvements every every year. Unfortunately, you know, as has been mentioned, the politics they got involved in in this year's census, I think probably was a detriment to getting accurate collection. So again, I was surprised that the populations didn't go up more than they did. I wasn't raising alarm bells, because I, for what we do, I'm not sure if there were a couple hundred people plus or minus would have made a difference. I had mentioned this in the past, and people may remember this, and I I don't remember what the threshold was. I think it was thirty-five thousand dollars or thirty-five thousand people for some transportation grant that we had to make. And, you know, if a community came in at thirty-four-nine ninety-nine, and that was a threshold for applying for a grant, that's a big deal. But I I don't see how we might be off, being off to a degree that would affect us in real practical ways.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. So just to kind of recap what I'm hearing and what I know, you know, the this census took place in really difficult conditions. Censuses are always really hard to take, but the fact that it was in the middle of a pandemic, that was right when people were displaced, when they didn't wanna go to their door, when census takers didn't wanna go out. When it happened during a time of political unrest, I don't know if unrest is the right word, but the fact that people were afraid to answer in a way that they weren't in twenty-ten, there's always some fear. But it was really brought to a head this time around, and it was centered more on the on the census than what we've seen in in earlier censuses. The fact that differential privacy, this new method of privacy protection is being instituted now. All these things are in the mix, and so I guess my word of advice on these numbers is proceed with caution. Listen to your folks on staff who who know the numbers, know the building, you know, permits and teardowns, and, you know, just just be a little bit cautious with with interpreting these numbers. There will be a survey that comes out that the Census Bureau publishes that tells us how accurate or inaccurate the census was at the state level, and we can probably make some conclusions about local levels once we get that. But it will give us a sense, it's it's called the post-enumeration survey. It it will hopefully give us a sense of of the size of the undercount of of different groups. And so that will give us kind of one more piece of the puzzle about what to make of these data. Oh, I knew I had those, that thousand number in there somewhere. So the makeup of Richfield, according to the twenty-twenty census, shows that just over forty-one percent of the city are part of a BIPOC community. Eighteen percent is the number for Hispanic residents, ten percent for Black or African-American, and seven percent for Asian or Pacific Islander. During the census, we saw a big increase in the number of people reporting that they were multiracial. That is due to the fact that more people are multiracial, and also the Census Bureau made it a little bit easier to report that. So we've seen across the board really big increases in that number. It's starting to be a large and growing share for for many communities. And if we look kind of how each race group changed, we see what we saw at the state level with white, non-Hispanic residents in Richfield declining just a little bit compared to twenty-ten and increases in other BIPOC race groups. I'm not gonna go into these here, but if you you've got copies of the slides, there's some maps where you can look around quadrant by quadrant at those racial numbers. Again, same caution I would give you with the totals, probably even more so for the race numbers. We talked about kind of some of the challenges this time around, and I just wanna make sure I'm not going over time.
Nope, we have plenty of time.
Okay, 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 thank you. We talked about how hard it was to do the census. Again, just just be cautious when looking at these numbers. And if you know on the ground that they don't look right, I would, I would fully support a conclusion that they may not be right. That's plenty, plenty in the mix to make these numbers look a little strange. There is something that the city can do if you believe that housing units were misallocated to another city or if you're missing altogether, and that's something called the Census Count Question Resolution, or CQR program. And so between January and June of twenty-twenty-three, January twenty-twenty-two and and June twenty-twenty-three, you can take a deep dive, and the highest elected official brings this challenge to the Census Bureau to say, we think that, we think that some of our housing was misallocated to another city. They're very strict about, in the past, they've been very strict about what they will take as data to back up these challenges. And there's some question about whether they will add housing units that are not there. They may move housing units that were counted, but they may not add something in that wasn't counted altogether. But that's currently kind of being decided. So just be aware that there is one, one formal pathway to change your census count if it's something that that looks like it needs to be done. And I just wanna end with what's happening with our redistricting at the federal level, and then I'll look at a few senate districts, just to give you a sense of how your political representation is shifting because of the changes that we've seen around the state. So to begin with the US congressional districts, they've grown in size. They, you know, after the last census, each of our eight districts were just over six-hundred-sixty-two thousand people. Now they're up to seven-hundred-thirteen thousand because of that growth. And District Five, US Congressional District Five, of which Richfield is a part, was the second fastest-growing district. You can see that all districts in Minnesota grew. But those that grew more will need to shrink in geographic size or concentrate that representation in a smaller geographic area as a result of the growth that happened there. We can see kind of across the state, this should look familiar to you, because it just follows the population growth numbers that we just looked at. The metro areas of, you know, Mankato, Rochester, Morehead, and then our our kind of further suburban cities stand out in terms of where the growth happened. These are the districts, again, that will need to shrink in size to make up for that equal population or equal representation that happens after the redistricting process. And here is the same map, just zoomed in on the Twin Cities metropolitan area. And you can see kind of, again, that it's it's matching the the growth patterns that we saw when we looked at total population growth, that some of the the areas that have grown the fastest are those areas that will need to change during this redistricting cycle. Looking specifically at the senate districts that intersect with Richfield, you can see the growth is kind of moderate growth relative to other districts. The districts on the far left include Minneapolis and Apple Valley, Lakeville region. Are those kind of fifty-seven, sixty, fifty-nine at the far left? There were a few senate districts that lost population. They are in the far northern part of the state, in the far western part of the state. Again, think of that map with the oranges on it, that's the one that showed where the population losses were. And those districts will need to grow, will need to expand in geographic size to meet that same number of people. The number that they'll be working to meet this time will be eighty-five thousand for a senate district, half of that for a state house district. And this is a similar graphic, but instead of showing just the number of growth, the amount of growth between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, now we're just saying, how different is it from that ideal population size or the size of the district the senate district needs to be? And in both cases, the districts, Senate District Fifty and Senate District Sixty-three is, comes in under the the ideal population size, so it will need to grow a little bit, but it's really pretty close to the ideal size. So you can expect, you know, who knows what you can expect when, once the redistricting that is kind of nearby happens. But in terms of just the size of growth that happened to these districts, we know that it's about on par with with the growth to make it very close to the ideal population size. Of course, it's affected by all the changes that will happen around it. You are welcome to email me anytime or stop me at Target if you like. And I'm happy to take questions now, too, if you have any.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and thank you on behalf of our entire community for your work. It is so important to our city and to our whole state. So thanks for that presentation. Do we have questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Supple?
So you mentioned redistricting. So do you like, are you the one that testifies, gives all this information to the committees that are sorting it all out? Or what's your role in all of that?
So there have been so far eight hearings that I've testified at and just shared where the growth has happened. I don't kind of get involved in drawing the maps. If they have questions about the data, which they will, and they do, then then I kind of help them with that. But for the most part, I'm just explaining where the growth happened in advance of them kind of taking public testimony.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Wayland?
I think this is a a moving target. So I think the answer is we don't exactly know, and it depends on how it plays out. But what is the timeline on redistricting? And I I guess I'm asking specifically because I recently heard that the next year's caucuses may happen before the districts are even drawn. And so I was just wondering if we know when the districts are likely to be decided.
The, there's a deadline for the House and Senate to agree to a map by February fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Of course, this time around, the courts are working at the same time, creating their maps. And so it really comes down to a question of whether the House and Senate will agree by that timeline. You know, that's, that's a big question mark. And then, and then, you know, if the the courts, I think, are moving to meet that timeline as well. I believe that there's public hearings right now that the court is is taking input. The court's panel is taking input on on redistricting, which is a little bit unusual in the past. They kind of just decided, and and this time they're kind of operating as as, you know, listening to information from people as as they're drawing those lines, too. So I know February twenty twenty two is the deadline. I don't know if it's going to be met. I know people are working toward it, though.
Yeah, thank you. I think the the big question that could significantly change how we as a city relate to the legislature is whether we continue to be split between districts or end up all in one. But we'll see. The the other quick question I had, not knowing a ton about like census data, is is it updated between the decade census? And like, especially considering like as we were talking about the the numbers, knowing particularly in the northeast and northwest area, there is a bunch of development that is either nearly done or underway. That's going to signify, could potentially change our population quite significantly. And I, does it wait ten years before that's updated or?
So the, typically, the gold standard for data is the decennial census because it's a full count. But in between censuses, there's a couple of things that go on that bring those numbers. An update, they are estimates, they're not full counts. But our office for the eighty counties outside of the Twin Cities Metro and the Metropolitan Council for the seven counties within it create population estimates each year based on that housing stock that you were talking about. And so, you know, basically, it's taking the average number of people in a household times the number of 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 housing. So it's not exactly a count, it's just, you know, this is as close as we can get at this point. So yes, it's updated. No, it's not as accurate typically as the census. But the census serves as the basis for those counts. So if we see inaccuracies in these numbers, we're really likely to see inaccuracies until the next twen- twenty thirty, till the next count. I don't know.
The only thing I would add is, you know, at the staff level, the the raw numbers from the census are somewhat helpful. But what we really get a lot of use out of is the economic data that comes out later. I don't know if they've changed the terminology. For some reason, I think they did. But the the Community Survey, American Community Survey data, and that that follows the census by some time. And that, you know, when that comes out, we can compile that data and provide you with a presentation. And that, like I said, for what we do in community development anyways, oftentimes more helpful than the actual census information.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
So the ACS has population estimates. Are those calculated the same way as the Met Council estimates? Or where do those come from?
Those come from the Census Bureau, and so it's another, they have access to more records than the Metropolitan Council does, but they also are further away. So typically, what we do is we get the population estimates from the Census Bureau as we compare them to the the Met Council's and to our estimates and give feedback on them. So it's just one more data source. That's the total population number, and then some of the race numbers and age numbers. The American Community Survey is an ongoing survey that's updated annually with economic and social and that kind of. But it's it's calibrated back to the census and those population estimates coming out of the Census Bureau.
Okay. And then one thing I was just curious about, maybe a private question for the city manager or Mr. Stark. But the local map, the ward map, is that updated by a state process? Or is that updated locally? Or how does that change?
That's a good question. I know first congressional districts have to get figured out, and then the city clerk knows. I'll be quiet. Stop talking.
Okay, so since I'm new to the city clerk role, I haven't really delved too much into redistricting yet. It is on the my radar to delve into as well. Hennepin County helps us out with a lot of our redistricting. So Hennepin County will be helping me through that process. But it is a, I have three other books to look through because the previous city clerks have kept old redistricting guides to look through. So it is a process that I will be starting once this election cycle has ended as well. So it it's something that we do here, along with Hennepin County, to figure out whether or not we need to split up into more wards or split up into more precincts. All of those things will be happening with that redistricting.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Okay, I can add a couple. So I was just super excited to see this presentation and this information. And so the big picture thing that I'm thinking is, how do we apply this information from the census to our work at the city? And a couple ways that I think about, I just think about how we tell our story here, who we are here in Richfield. And how does it connect with our day-to-day as staff, with our day-to-day as elected officials, as community members? And one of the areas, I guess I will just say that I get personally frustrated about is that there seems to be a very strong misunderstanding around why we should be focusing on racial equity in the city of Richfield. And when I see numbers that are not, you know, this is not a political thing or or anything like that, this is the U.S. Census that is saying forty one percent of our residents in this city are people of color. And so to me, that tells us that we need to be thinking about how are we making sure that we're serving our entire city and meeting the needs of the diversity of our city that is diversifying, that is growing. And we do see changes, and we see that reinforced by the U.S. Census. So that focus of equity as a city, I just think seeing this presentation really solidifies that. And I think we have an opportunity to see, how do we use data to make sure that we are rooting our work in the data, which in this case is the U.S. Census or, you know, the American Community Survey is another great one that would have great information. But what does that mean for our work across the city, but also how we engage here in in on all different levels? So I think about, you know, how do we present this information to staff so that our staff understand the changes and the trends here in our city of Richfield? How might we change, how might we present that to our community members and our our commissions and our boards? And how do we talk about that as elected officials? So I think one is kind of like, how do we communicate this? To show a more up-to-date, comprehensive picture of who we are as a city, and then how that informs our work? How do we drive our work in this data that we're seeing out of the census? And then I would just love a community profile of the city of Richfield where it's an up-to-date snapshot that does have U.S. Census information, American Community Survey information that does give a a profile of our city. Who is our city? What's the median age? What are the, you know, the main industries that people work in? What are the household sizes? All of those types of of things. Because as a policymaker, it's helpful for me anywhere I go to just have that most up-to-date information. But also, I think it's helpful for our residents because I do think there's just maybe misunderstanding, misinformation, which totally is understandable about who our city is today. And then, let's see. Oh, and then also, I think we are positioned very well, and I think we have a lot more advocacy we can do rooted in in the demographics that we're seeing out of the census. When you think about advocating for state, you know, funding, for federal funding, and you look at the changes that we're experiencing in Richfield, I think we have a very strong case rooted in the data of why we should be getting more funding and more support from the state. We are quickly growing, we're diversifying. And I think that that is something we can speak to as an asset to our city, but also a reason why we, you know, need to keep partnering and and be assertive in getting that support to to support our residents. We are, you know, our city is changing, and it's changing very quickly, and that's a strength. And it also requires, you know, I think about a great example, Woodlake Nature Center. Where, you know, there's so many things that Woodlake Nature Center is, but it's an asset to our changing and growing city, but also to the whole region. And I think just kind of figuring out how do we use this data that we're seeing and really leveraging it in our advocacy could really help us get, I think, more funds and get us on on more radars for folks. So I think the biggest thing that I think about is how do we apply the census data to root it and connect it back to our work? And I also would just love to not continue arguing that this is a need or an issue to focus on equity. You know, I think of of residents that I connect with who might not understand that. This is who our city is today, and it's beneficial for us today and tomorrow to be focusing on those kind of things. So those are some of the main things that I thought about.
Other questions or comments from folks? Councilmember Wayland?
Just a connection I made. I agree that having a kind of continually updating demographic snapshot of who we are makes sense. And I'm realizing the really great place I've seen that is our comprehensive plan. But that's always like two years before we get the census update. Do we, whether it's, I don't know if we're literally allowed to replace or update that in the comp plan. But are there other times that we update that and create a new snapshot like that?
In terms of the comprehensive plan, yes, we can augment that as time goes by. I think that there are, there are probably ways of doing it that are easier than others. To, you know, to have a comprehensive plan change would have to go through the Met Council and get approved. But to have documents that are adopted into or referenced into, there there's a mechanics that we can do that. But certainly, you know, through city manager's office, through other administrative folks in the city, we can we can provide data on our website that is updated as frequently as as the data allows to show the the demographic trends in the community.
Councilmember Supple?
Do we work with the school districts or the Department of Education as far as, like, you were talking about household sizes and stuff? I would think that they would be a very good source of information for that.
We we certainly share data with the school district. They ask us frequently about, you know, housing permits, when those might be pulled. So they are aware of of where the growth is happening and how much growth should be happening so so that they can plan for it. You know, they they want to set their budgets every year with the right number of students, obviously. Household size, that's a good question. I don't know if they have any better handle on household size than we do or not. So the next time we have a conversation with them, I will, I'll push on that a little bit.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So we use MDE's data for language because we think it's better than, more complete than than the census data. So that's just one way that we use school district data, was just to look at languages spoken at home. It is a subset of the whole, but we get much more detail because it's an administrative record instead of coming from a survey. And then the other thing that I just, you may be aware, but there are four profiles that the census produces annually at every level. So for the city of Richfield, social, economic, housing, and I can't remember the other one, demographic. So you could use those. It's a, it's a lot of information. It's five years of data pooled for a city this size. But at at least it's annually updated. It might provide information, and it's just right there and ready to download every, whenever you're ready for it.
Other comments or questions from council? And city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question. We talked about the ACS data. When will the next update of that be?
So typically, we would have already received it, but it was, it got all hung up in the pandemic. And so for what we would have received in September, we're getting something called an experimental dataset. So we don't know what it's going to look like. So typically, it's every year in September. This time, I don't even know if I want to recommend using it, but we'll have to see what it looks like. There there were long stretches where they couldn't go out in the field and and collect it. So they they've got big holes where they typically would be collecting the data.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you so much. So are you going to all the different cities and doing these presentations?
I go where I'm asked. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to be here.
We're super excited that you spent time with us today, and it is exciting to to review the information and see how we can apply it. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Any other things before I adjourn our work session? Okay, I will adjourn our work session. Thank you, everyone.